So, good evening. My name is Melissa Hernandez. I'm the mayor of Dublin. And we would like to welcome you to our live event, our Dublin City Council event for this month. And so tonight with me is council member Mike McCorristan. And as you know, this year has already flown by for most of us. And the holidays are quickly approaching. So tonight, we have our police chief Garrett Holmes and Sergeant Chris Shepherd here to discuss all the ways our Dublin police officers will be ensuring our residents and businesses will have a safe holiday season. So with that, I will go ahead and hand it off to Chief Holmes.
Thank you, Mayor Hernandez. And it's our honor to be here tonight and talk with you in the community in regards to some safety tips of what we can do for our holiday crime suppression unit. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sergeant Chris Shepherd.
Hi, good evening. Welcome to the Holiday Crime Prevention. Our holidays are just finished Halloween. So now we're kind of full swing getting into the shopping season. So we want to make sure that everybody's prepared and we'll give you some tips on how to not become a victim of crime and for some of our crime prevention. So how do we prevent ourselves from becoming a victim? I would say through education, forming a neighborhood watch and identifying the most common crimes that occur in the Bay Area. So the most common crimes that we have in the Bay Area, especially with the holiday season, are residential burglaries, auto burglaries, robberies, and package thefts. So we'll talk about package thefts first. So many thieves, they target the front portions of the residence across the country during the holiday season. And most of us have transitioned to ordering our gifts online. So some ways to prevent the packages from being stolen are install surveillance cameras. Have the packages delivered to UPS satellite store, an Amazon hub locker, or install a smart delivery box which is controlled via wifi. And I'll give some pictures on the next slide. Many people may have not heard of a smart delivery box controlled by wifi or maybe unaware of the Amazon hub lockers. So I'll give you a few pictures for that. You can also have them delivered on a date when you know you'll be home. Deliver them to your work if you're not home, or have a neighbor pick them up if you aren't there. Or you could download apps to track the progress of your package and have a video camera on your porch. That can help you time the delivery and get a fight a moment to package arrives on your front porch. So the video camera can also record the suspect stealing your package, which will aid the police in solving the investigation. So a lot of these guys, they are following UPS trucks, they'll follow Amazon trucks, any type of delivery truck. And once the truck drops the package, they take off and then they're going right up to the door, picking up the package and taking off. Some of them will try to dress like delivery drivers and pick up the package as well. So if you're tracking it with your app, you have a pretty good idea of when that package, maybe a timeframe of when it's going to land on your door. And hopefully that will help you plan in preventing it from getting picked up from somebody else. So that might just be a neighbor that's home all the time that will walk over and pick it up when it comes. Or maybe you're getting home from work at a certain time where you have a lunch period where you can take off and grab your package at your house. So hopefully some of these things will help deter getting a package theft.
Hey, Chris, let me jump in here to the United States Post Office. They have an app that you can download on your phone and you can sign up for informed delivery. And so your everyday mail, what they do is it goes through a scanner and they scan your everyday mail. And so in the morning, I can wake up, I can take a look at that scan and I can see what mail is going to be delivered to my mailbox that day. And so, you know, with packages that are getting stolen as well as mail, it's a good way to track that in case somebody does steal mail out of your mailbox, you have something to compare it against.
Okay, so here on the left, we have a wifi box. You go online. Amazon sells them online along with several other companies. You bolt them to the ground in front of your house, or maybe you can put a lot of weight in there so they don't get taken off your front porch. But I'd say affix it to your front porch. And it's timed so that when the delivery guy wants to put a package in there, he opens it, it locks behind him, and then nobody could steal it off of your front porch. And then you have the Amazon hub box there. You can find those outside of stores. I've also seen them inside of some stores and supermarkets. So residential burglaries, that's another big one. So they can occur any time of the day. However, they tend to occur when residents are least likely to be at home. So sometimes they occur in the morning when people take their kids to school, they're gone for an hour or so. But most of them tend to really occur either when people are at work during the day or nighttime burglaries when people are out to dinner. And it seems like those are kind of the most common from 5:30 to 10:00 PM because it's dark, it's easier for them to, you know, enter a backyard and not be seen as they approach the front yard as well. So most of them involve three suspects acting together and their main point of entry, I would say 90% of the time is the rear sliding glass patio windows. So usually one is lookout, another one is in a car waiting to pick them up. And then the other one, the third one is the guy who is, you know, breaking into the house. So they usually select the house because they believe the residents are most likely not at home. And they'll knock on your front door or ring the doorbell to see if anybody's home. So if you have somebody knock on your door, you happen to answer it. They say, hey, I'm looking for somebody and it's somebody that's never lived there. That might be a clue that these guys were just casing your house. They just wanted to see if somebody was home and they're going to come to the door. And if they do, then they'll generally pick another house. So that's a common tactic that they use. If they don't hear anybody coming to the front door, they'll probably try and go around your side gate and go down to the backyard and break your rear sliding window. So we've had those happen across the Bay Area. It's the most common way for them to enter. Things like keeping your TV on inside or making a lot of noise, or just making sure that you answer the door if somebody knocks on it. Some of us will ignore somebody knocking on the door because they think it's a solicitor. But it's a good thing to try and answer your door. So as far as prevention tips, the best thing you can do is make it appear as if somebody's home. Lock all your doors and windows when you're not home, including your second story windows. A lot of people tend to think that they're not going to come through the second story. We've seen those across the Bay Area. So I would say, you know, or on the side of caution, make sure your second story windows are closed as well. You can utilize wifi lights, leave TV or music on, leave a car in the driveway. Don't let your garbage cans, don't leave them on the curb and then make sure you empty your mailbox daily. So these are things that burglars are looking for. If it looks like somebody's not home, they're more likely to to go to that house and choose that house. I put on there utilized wifi lights. You could buy these lights now at Home Depot, Costco. And you could control the light from your phone. You don't even have to be at home. You could turn the light on from your phone and be miles away. So if you forgot to turn any lights on, use the wifi lights, you could just turn those on, you know, while you're at dinner and it looks like somebody's home at your house. You can utilize motion detecting lights and motion activated cameras. Don't leave your garage door open in your car. So we'll go over that in a second. But don't leave your car registration or home address inside your vehicle. And then lock up all your valuables such as firearms, jewelry, credit cards, and cash. Those are the most sought after items that we have in burglaries. Obviously, we especially don't want these burglars to access firearms as well. We want to make sure that those are not used in crimes. And then make sure your alarm system and camera systems are charged and fully functional. We have been a good amount of houses that have alarm systems and we ask people, hey, was your alarm system on? They say, no, it hasn't worked in years. And the same thing with the camera system. So sometimes you get complacent because nothing happens. Just have to make sure you're prepared. So the camera systems are great, you know, obviously they'll activate if somebody's going by. And you can take a look and see if somebody's in your house or breaking into your house. And that actually helps us catch the suspects quicker because we get a kind of up to the second update from, you know, the victim who's on their phone watching it and then calling it our dispatch. So it helps us get there quicker and identify the people quicker. So when we talk about, don't leave your garage door opener in your car. So if you park your car outside and they happen to break into your car, they can use your garage door opener to get into the house. The garage door opens and a lot of people end up leaving that door that goes from the garage door to the interior of the house open as well. So I would say, don't leave the garage door open in the car, just bring it inside with you at the end of the night. And then reinforcing entry points. These are important because you want to make it as hard as you can for these guys to get into your house. The harder it is, the more chance that you have of them giving up or just moving on to someplace else. So reinforcing the front entry door and the side garage door. So those are the front entry doors, some of those are fairly decent. Side garage doors are usually a weak point in the build of the house. So you want to make sure that you reinforce those. Lock your side gates. That's going to prevent the suspects from easily accessing your backyard. You know, make it more difficult for them, you know, if they got to climb over a fence or a gate to get in the backyard, that's going to make noise and hopefully your neighbors will hear that and be alerted to their presence. And then make sure you lock that side garage door and the door that connects from your garage to the inside of the house. So a lot of people, because the garage doors closed, they feel pretty safe and they leave that interior door open. So I would say, especially during the holiday season, you want to make sure that you don't leave that as a weak point. So on the next page, I'll give you an example of what I'm about to talk about. Reinforcing your front door latch so that it can't be kicked in easily. So the little plate, the little catch plate where your your door latches, the screws that go in there into the studs in the doorway are usually pretty shallow. They're only about maybe like a half an inch to an inch deep. So they can easily be defeated. So if you go down to Home Depot or Lowe's, they have kits. And instead of having a small one inch screw holding that together, you can get much longer screws, up to three inches long that are going to make it a lot harder to defeat those latches. And then as far as rear sliding glass patio windows, which are the most most common point of entry, you can purchase, I think it's 3M window film. So they have different thicknesses of the film. It's like a window tint and you have that film put on your rear back patio sliders. And it helps prevent the glass from shattering so that they can enter easily. So it's going to take more than just one little hit to get through. Generally, these guys are using window punches and that makes the whole glass kind of shatter and fall. But if they use the window punch and you have film, it's not going to shatter and fall and make it easy for them. So on the left, here's an example of that door latch being reinforced. So you can see it's a three inch wood screw that goes into your door frame. And that helps reinforce that so that if somebody comes and tries to kick it, it's not going to easily be kicked through. If you have, if you can imagine, if you only had a half an inch or an inch screw, there's not a lot of, you know, material holding that together where if you have something going in with three inches deep, it's going to take a lot to remove that. So on the middle photo, we have the 3M window build there and this guy is hitting it with a hammer and it's not just falling apart in pieces and falling into the house, it's holding together. So it's going to make it quite a bit more difficult to gain entry into the house. And they're going to have to make a whole lot more noise than just throwing a river rock through the window or hitting it with a window punch. So that's going to, more noise is going to cause more of the neighborhood to be alerted to your presence. And then if you look on the far right, that's what they call the zombie bar. That's just one manufacturer that makes that. But that's how you would reinforce your side garage door. So that those side garage doors, it's pretty thin wood and the latch system is pretty easy to defeat. So if you put something like that on the back of the door, that's going to help prevent that door from being kicked in. If you look, it's kind of like a hook system. So you could slide that in and out. It's not that hard to remove. So auto burglaries, I would say it's probably one of the most common crimes throughout the Bay Area. So when we're thinking about these, I wouldn't think just about Dublin. I would think anywhere that you go in the Bay Area. Obviously, when you were watching the news, we see San Francisco, you know, gets hit pretty hard as well. So what's the most common thing taken in auto burglaries? Cell phones, tablets, backpacks, firearms, ID badges, keys, and packages. So the main thing in this is you don't want to leave anything visible. Nothing should be in view in your car. They can see it, they're going to break in and take it. And obviously, you know, all these things are important. Cell phones, we keep, our whole lives are in our cell phones. The same thing with tablets. Firearms, that's super important. You don't want a bunch of firearms floating out there with the criminals that are taking them. ID badges, ID badges, you know, a lot of them have key fobs on them. So it gives access to different places that people work at. So that's important that we don't want to give these people access to our businesses or our homes. And then packages, obviously, you know, everybody's at Christmas shopping. So if you're going to, if you have a trunk in your car, make sure those packages are out of view. So these crimes usually happen in retail shopping centers and restaurant parking lots. So to prevent this crime, make sure you double check your car doors and your windows to make sure that they're locked. So sometimes you'll see these guys and they're going through big retail shopping centers like that. And they're just walking through checking doors or lifting handles. Whatever one is easy access, that's what they're going to get into. But if they find something interesting like backpacks, they're usually going to smash the window. So your trunk is your best option as long as they're out of view. Then that's going to help prevent, it's a crime of opportunity. So if you don't see the opportunity, then hopefully then that crime doesn't take place.
So Sergeant Shepherd, I have a question with regards to, you know, many folks leave work, right? And then they, they want to have dinner before they get home. And so they happen to stop at Market Tavern. And you leave your backpack, right, in the back of, and you think it's off. But is there such thing that some of these criminals have devices where they can tell whether you have a laptop in your vehicle or not?
So they do have apps where they go through the parking lot and they could kind of almost triangulate items that have Bluetooth or wifi that are on. Obviously, if you're going by and they, as they're driving slowly, they're watching their phone on this app. And they're looking for, you know, the Bluetooth going off or you're looking for the wifi going off. We've seen them on video where you can see them going through and then they stop and then they get out of the car and they go to that specific car. So they can tell if electronic devices are left on in the car. Not all of them have it, but I would think the guys that are doing it all the time definitely have the good system.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that, just kind of make that point because that does happen. And you think, we're like, okay, we're going to hide our laptop or something. And again, the trunk is, there's the best spot for it, you know, or if you have your backpack. But they do have that device just because I've known some people that's happened to.
The other thing too is to put your, if you're going to put your items in the trunk, put them at a location prior to you driving to the location you're going to be there. Because you don't want to see them, have them see you take your backpack and put it in the trunk, close the trunk and then walk into the store. At least make it a challenge for them.
And these guys spend a great deal of time either following people that come out of certain stores or just sitting in the parking lot, watching people. They can see when you're hiding something under a seat. They see the, they see the body bend down and then come back up. So they know that something's being hidden there. So it is a good idea to do that, you know. If you're going to, if you're shopping in the Hossian Crossing, you put stuff in your vehicle, maybe drive out of the Hossian Crossing, down the block and then come back. That way, they think you've left rather than doing it right there in front of them. Also a good idea to park in a well lit area with lots of foot traffic. So anytime that there's a lot of foot traffic, that means more witnesses. More witnesses means it's a little harder for these guys to commit the crime that they want because people are going to see what they look like, what they're doing. And more opportunity for them to call the police. So park in a well lit area where there's a lot of people coming and going. Try not to park as far out in the parking lot as you can get. Try and park closer to where people are going to be walking by. And then so don't leave your home address or registration in your vehicle. So registration, you can keep that on your phone. You can just take a picture of it. If you get pulled over, you can show that to the police officer that pulls you over. And the reason that we say this is, say you're out having dinner someplace or you're in a movie or shopping. And these guys go into your car and they burglarize your car. If they're able to pull up anything with your home address in it, they're going to know, hey, they're inside the movie theater, they're not coming back for two hours. Then they could go to your house and they'll burglarize your house. So you just want to make sure that they don't have that information, especially, you know, we used to have those old Tom Toms and the GPS devices in the car. And it would have the, you know, the home button, hit the home button that says where you live. So I think most people have that in their navigation system in their car now. And that might not be as accessible to the criminals, but I certainly wouldn't leave anything with paper in the car that gives them that ability to find out where you live.
Yeah, to go along with that, the registration is you also have your garage door opener. So, you know, for women, you have a purse. So it might be better to keep your garage door opener in your purse rather than leaving it on the visor compartment in your vehicle. Because they'll take your registration, your garage door opener, and they'll go hit your house. So it's really incumbent upon anybody who has an auto burglary to do a quick inventory of it, call as soon as possible. Because if we believe that they took, took those two items, we'll send an officer to the house to make sure to try to head them off before they arrive to burglarize a residence as well.
So that was commercial area auto burglary. So some tips for auto burglaries in the neighborhood. Make sure you don't leave valuables or packaging in your vehicle overnight. Before you go to bed, double check, make sure you didn't leave anything in the car. Because most of these burglaries occur during the night. I'd say they must always occur during the night. Don't leave your home or work keys in your vehicle. And then by law, firearms are required to be placed out of plain view, unloaded, locked in the trunk of the vehicle or in a locked container inside of the car. So not the locked glove box. And I put this in there because, you know, it's a crime to leave it accessible to suspects. And obviously, I want to make sure everybody knows, hey, a glove box is not a good place to be just leaving a firearm. It's easily accessible. We don't want those taken by suspects and out where they can harm people. So, so most of the time, these occur, you know, in the middle of the night. And same thing, I think it's probably more common that these suspects are walking through the neighborhood just trying door handles, just trying to see who left their vehicle unlocked. And then they get into them that way. We do have some where they break the window and get into them, obviously. Especially if you leave backpacks and stuff like that in there. But I would just say, before you go to bed, just make sure that you make sure all the windows are up and then that the doors are locked. If you hit that alarm a couple of times, just to make sure that, you know, your vehicle's secure before you go to bed. So robberies, those, those obviously are more prevalent during the holiday season. So I want to make sure that you guys are safe from robberies. So the best way to prevent yourself from becoming a victim of robbery is to pay attention to your surroundings and your environment. So when you're walking in a parking lot, stay off the phone, look at the people, cars around you. I see a lot of people walking in parking lots and they're looking at their phone or talking to the people next to them, not really paying attention. So this is the time of year when we kind of need to break off of our electronics and just every once in a while, look up, look around you, see is there anybody close to the car that you're going to? Are there people, you know, hanging out in the parking lot or maybe in the shopping area that you're at that aren't acting like everybody else? They're just seem like they're casing people. So just pay attention to your environment around you. One of the big things that these thieves have been taking is Rolex watches. So if you join wearing your Rolex watch, this just might be a season where you want to, you know, take a break. Or maybe you only wear it to certain areas that you're going to where you feel safe. But that is one of the things that they've been looking for. Watch for people or vehicles following you. So while you're out, you're looking around, watch and see if these vehicles are, you know, if you're going down one parking aisle and you switch to another one and that car seems to be following you. Take notice of it. Try and take notice, you know, what's the, what's the color of the vehicle? How many doors are on the vehicle? Is it, you know, what's the model of the vehicle? How many people are in it? Just in case something happens. And then plan your movements so that you can walk in well in areas with lots of witnesses. So if you see suspicious people while you're in your car, you can obviously drive to a safe place, right? So don't get sucked into thinking, well, they're coming towards me and I need to, I'm stuck where I'm at. Think of a way to get out of there and move yourself out of that position. And the same thing if you're on foot. So if you're on foot, walking through a parking lot, you see some people that look like they're focusing on you. You don't know them and they're suspicious and you're kind of thinking, well, I don't really feel safe right now. Change the direction that you're going. Start walking to where there's more people, where there's a crowd, where there's witnesses, where it's well lit, or maybe a store that you can go inside, but some safe location where you can avoid them. If you see them coming towards you, that doesn't mean that you have to engage in conversation with them or talk to them at all. You can just detour right out of there and get yourself to a better location. So Neighborhood Watch, we have these all over the city of Dublin. And our crime prevention unit can help you create your Neighborhood Watch program. So you might wonder, what exactly is the Neighborhood Watch? So it's a network of information sharing that increases the level of communication throughout your neighborhood. So basically, we get a group of people together in your neighborhood. And we set up a meeting, we come out to the meeting and we share information similar to this throughout your neighborhood so that everybody, we bring the level of education up as far as crime so that everybody knows kind of how the crimes are committed, what's the most common crimes, what to watch out for, how to be a good witness, and how to spread that communication through your neighborhood so everybody knows. So once everybody knows, it creates a higher level of awareness in your neighborhood, which will help prevent crime. While we're there, we also listen to whatever concerns you have. Maybe it's not a crime. Maybe it's, you know, illegal parking or speeding or some other, some other concerns that might help make your community a safer place to live or a more enjoyable place to live. So we have a couple of other programs. We have a vacation check program as well. So the Vacation Check Program, you fill out a form online. Say you're going to go away for a week or two weeks or a month. You fill out a card online and it goes to our watch sergeant and then he will have the deputy that works that specific area go into periodic patrol checks of that house to make sure nobody's broken into it and there's no damage to it or anything like that. So that's one of the programs we have. So that's one of the programs we have. And you can access that on the City of Dublin webpage. And then we have a surveillance camera program. That's a voluntary program. And basically what it is, is say there's a crime in your neighborhood, like a burglary or maybe a car gets stolen. What happens is is you register your camera with Dublin Police Services and it tells us that there's a camera at your house that we can, if there's a crime, we can knock on the door and ask you if you would give us the video surveillance footage. So we have a map and it shows us the location of all of the cameras in the city that belong to residents. So helps our detectives. If there's a crime, instead of them wondering who's got a camera, they can go look at this map and go, okay, there is this many cameras in that area. We'll go contact the people that live there and hopefully we'll be able to get some surveillance footage that will help capture the suspects or lead our investigators to more information. So it's a really good program. It's completely voluntary and you can register that through the City of Dublin webpage as well. So this is our Crime Prevention Unit contact info. I have Sergeant Josh Phillips' information there. He's one of the, he's the Crime Prevention Sergeant Deputy Will Cowan. He is also in the Crime Prevention Unit along with Deputy Paula Greenbaum. So they handle everything from Neighborhood Watch to the DARE program, to community activities. And then if you're interested in the Neighborhood Watch, technicians Jessica Rata and Catalina Medellis, they handle all the Neighborhood Watch organizing and meetings. If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask and we'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions from our audience?
So we haven't received any questions yet from the audience.
Okay. Hey, John, can you please change the screen so that we see everybody now? Thank you. One thing I want to mention is with regards to gas stations. So you know, a lot of us go to gas stations, we leave our door unlocked. I know most of us pay at the pump now versus going in. But the only reason why I bring this up is because actually a very dear friend of mine in Walnut Creek was on the phone talking to her, her daughter and a car drove up and this just happened only like a few months ago with some suspects and they literally stole her, her like right in front of her stole her purse and then went to the next vehicle and stole another, you know, tried to grab another purse. And then by that time, people were seeing what was going on and were calling the police. But she was so afraid that she ran straight home or she had to call her, her keys were in her purse. So she had to call her husband to come pick her up at the gas station. And then they had to turn around and call every credit card. They changed the door, you know, because all her information was in her purse. So just as something like that, when you're going to go get gas, all it takes is those few seconds. John, any questions?
No, we have not received any questions yet from our attendees.
Yeah, Councilmember McQuarston, do you have any, anything to add this evening?
Just, just comment, you know, I, I found this very useful. A lot of good information. Oftentimes we pay little attention, whether it's out of inconvenience or whatever, until it actually hits us. So these are some of the things that, that are really practical strategies. Honestly, I, I think the takeaway in all of this is you really have to think and be proactive. You need to be aware of your surroundings. Some of the points I, I pick up is be vigilant, don't be preoccupied. And then, you know, one of the other, other comments is we're living in a time when we realize, well, we've realized the old adage that, that crooks are attracted to shiny objects. So let's, let's kind of be a little more considerate and aware of our surroundings and, and just, you know, really have a, a good a good holiday. And the other thing is that these aren't just about holiday. This is, these are practical tips that we can apply all year long. And, and I just, I want to thank you. I think these are, there's a lot of good information here tonight.
No, we should always be, you know, having a teenager and, and an older son, just always, you know, tell him to be careful and to walk with a purpose and make sure that they are always checking their surroundings at all times. But I do want to thank Chief Holmes and Sergeant Shepard for taking your time this evening. And the rest of the Dublin Police Officers who will be keeping us safe and keeping an eye out for all of our residents here during the holiday season. And we appreciate all that you do. Just in closing, with regards to safety in our cities, and I know that Dublin still is a very safe community to live in. And I know that you, you may have some, some thoughts on that, Chief Holmes.
Yeah, we're very fortunate. We have, we have a really good community and you know, the, the police department really feels the support from the community, our elected officials, the city manager's office, you know, with all the, the tools that you guys have given us to help protect the city. And you know, it's something that, that I always look at is new technologies that are coming out, you know, in order to make our job more efficient. One of the things that we're looking into now is with all of the the cameras that we have throughout town, is maybe adding some, a layer of artificial intelligence to those cameras. And what it'll do is it'll be a force multiplier for us. And what it'll do is it'll ingest all the video that comes in from, from those cameras. We'll be able to do searches. Right now we're doing manual searches where we're going through video, just using the human eye. But the technology there is absolutely amazing. And so if you think about a lot of the major intersections in our town where we have hundreds of cars that are going through those intersections every hour and then trying to go back and search through that video. These software programs now, you're able to punch in it, is it a car? Is it a truck? What color is it? And it quickly narrows down the possibilities within the matter of seconds, which is instrumental to us because if we can catch them during the time and the day that they committed that crime, a lot of, you know, that's our best opportunity to recover the stolen property for either our businesses or our residents. And so you know, that's kind of something that, that we're doing. One of the lieutenants here is, is working on that right now. Once he gets done with that, then I can, can move it on up and we can take a look at that. So thank you for everybody's support. And you know, we're very fortunate that we have a very safe city.
No, we, we definitely are. And again, thank you all for watching us this evening. Our, our recording will be posted so that if folks weren't able to make it this evening, they are able to watch it and get all those safety tips that Sergeant Shepard had provided us this evening. Again, thank you so much for watching our live program and we will see you next time.